I did.
Hello, Dave speaking.
Hey, Dave, it's Hans from the ZBA.
Hey, Hans, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
All right.
Hey, welcome to the meeting, we have you on speakerphone.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, first I'm gonna give you, again, welcome back to the Lunenburg zoning Board of Appeals. I have to give you a notification that this hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access. I will introduce the board again, to my left is Lisa Norman and the Board Secretary, I'm Al Gravel, James Bezakowski, Paul Doherty, and Hans Winthrop. Also tonight, calling in remotely, is Dave Blatt, who is participating in the hearing as our fifth member. The reason that he could not attend here tonight is due to geographic distance, therefore he is away on business, so he is attending, he is attending again through the remote. David, I have a question. Can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Have you, you have watched the CD and you have all of the materials in front of you tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Okay, again, normally Lisa would read the application, but in this particular case, this is a continuance of a hearing that was originally scheduled for June 27th and has been continued twice. So, what this is, this is a continuance of a petition from Kevin Hill, 410 Lancaster Ave., Lunenburg, Mass. 01462. The property which is the subject of this case is located at 171 Gilchrist Street, Lunenburg, Mass. and owned by Edward Sozik, Eileen M. Hamel, and Linda C. Dyer. The petitioner is seeking a special permit for a dimensional variation to reduce the area of proposed building lots in order to facilitate a land swap with the town of Lunenburg. The town to receive seven acre parcel, the abutted to receive a 15,000 square foot parcel. The way it will proceed is because Lisa has already read in all of the documentation from several other town boards at the last hearing, if there is anything new at the end of this, I will ask her to read that in to the minutes. And tonight, the applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of any additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and the board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have at that time while the applicant is at the mic. Again, at the end, we will have a public comment period. Again, you will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and please address all comments and questions to the board. This is a special permit, a very dimensional requirement, so the required findings are, one, that the permit may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. The specific site is an appropriate location for such building or alteration. The proposed building or alteration is compatible with the existing neighborhood with regard to size, location, and architect. The granting of the special permit will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The granting of the special permit will not unreasonably diminish the available light, air, sunlight, and other amenities, and there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. And with that, I would invite the applicant to make his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Jamie Rowe from Whitman &amp; Bingham Associates, registered engineers and surveyors, offices in Lomond and Chelmsford, Mass. I represent Kevin Hill, the applicant, in this particular petition before the zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Hill is a longstanding resident of the town of Lunenburg and potentially would like to sell his house and build a house here as well, as part of the seven lots we're proposing. The current property owner is the Sozik family, again, another well-respected name in the town of Lunenburg. And Mr. Hill cannot be here this evening, at the last minute he got a phone call, medical situation with one of his children, so he had to attend to that, and he apologizes for not being here, otherwise he would be here. This is very, very important to him, but his family needs him. So, that said, Mr. Hill hired Whitman &amp; Bingham Associates to bring forward a design and permit for seven residential houses on a piece of property located on Gilchrist Street and Valley Road, right opposite Primrose Lane, here in the town of Lunenburg. It's a 21 acre parcel, currently owned by the Sozik family, and the parcel, the two parcels of land that we're talking about this evening, this parcel right here, there is a strip of land 20 feet wide owned by the town of Lunenburg, and then another piece of land owned by the Sozik family. These three parcels are all part of this development that we're proposing before you this evening. And the first thing Whitman &amp; Bingham does when we're involved in a project like this is we perform a boundary line survey on the ground, and a topographic survey of the property locating natural features. In this particular case, topography, Mulpus Brook, a walking trail, and bordering vegetated wetlands, as well as other wetland resource areas. And once we mapped this and had a plan together, we call that the existing conditions plan. That existing conditions plan is the base plan moving forward for all our design work and all our permitting work, and it's the base plan for this plan before you this evening. That said, once we had it mapped out and we had all the abutters on, it became apparent that we needed to have a conversation with the town of Lunenburg for a couple of reasons. Number one, Mulpus Brook is located on the rear of the property. Number two, we have a walking trail coming from the abutting property owned by the town of Lunenburg. Town of Lunenburg purchased the lane property back in 2015, approximately 168 acres, is a walking trail that comes from that property onto us. So, we mapped out, prepared this existing conditions plan, and had a meeting with Adam Bernie, the town planner, and just went over the plan with him, showing him what we found and how we can resolve this and move forward with our development. It quickly became apparent that the town had a piece of property that really they couldn't use. We had a piece of property that they could use and wanted. So, we actually had a discussion with Adam Bernie and Matt Morrow, the Conservation Commission Administrator, to see if we should move forward in a different way, because typically we don't have these types of discussions. Typically, we design permit and move forward very quickly. We put the brakes on a little bit to have this conversation with the town of Lunenburg. After we had those discussions with Adam Bernie and Matt Morrow, we quickly prepared a warrant article for the, I believe, May or June town meeting in the town of Lunenburg. We put forward a warrant article asking the town residents to vote on a potential land swap between property owner and the town of Lunenburg. The town of Lunenburg would give up this strip of land, we would give up a parcel of lands of approximately seven acres. I believe that was voted in the affirmative, and we went forward from there, had a site walk and a couple meetings with the Conservation Commission, and showed them what we would like to propose, and they agreed, they all voted to endorse this type of land development with the land swap itself. I believe they submitted a letter to the ZBA, which was read into the record at the last time. I also believe that Adam Bernie, the planner, town planner, also wrote a letter in support of this as well. And that prompted the application before the zoning Board of Appeals for a dimensional variation moving forward. Been doing this for a long time, 30 years, and I've come to many board meetings in the town of Lunenburg. I actually wish Paula Bertram was here, because a lot of developments that I would make a presentation on affected the water quality of Mulpus Brook, and she was always an advocate of protecting that water quality, so we would always have to do many things to improve that, to make sure our development did not impact it. In this particular case, we're completely trying to give this land to the town, protecting that resource, and none of our development will be within 100 feet of that brook, so that's a fantastic situation to have. That said, moving forward, a good deal between the parties is always a good deal for both, both parties. If a deal is lopsided, it's not a good deal and shouldn't move forward. In this particular case, we're proposing to land swap, parcel A, for a 20-foot strip of land, as well as give an access easement on our property to the town of Lunenburg from Valley Road, 15 feet wide, going all the way back to parcel A. So, proposed access, this access will be eliminated, and we heard at the last meeting the Conservation Commission members speak about, and there were some concerns from the abutters on what type of access this would be. I have no control over that. We heard that this is only pedestrian access, hiking access, walking access, no vehicles, no parking is proposed along Valley Road or Gilchrist Street. So, that said, I'm just, again, just saying what they said at the last meeting. And again, we have no control over that. So, based upon the situation with the Conservation Commission, Adam Bernie and Kevin Hill, Whitman &amp; Bingham came up with this lot scheme based upon topography and testing, soil testing. We did all the testing required to design septic systems on these lots. I think we might have one confirmatory perk test to finish, but it's all completed, so we know this lot scheme works for many reasons. That said, the property itself is zoned, multi-zoned. We have a zone line going right through the bottom half of it, the southerly portion, not too far off of Gilchrist Street. We have a zone line separating Residence A and outlying zoning districts. Residence A zoning district is 40,000 square feet, 100 feet of frontage. You can reduce the frontage to 50 feet if you double the lot area. We are not proposing to double the lot area on any lot within the Residence A zone, all lots are at least 40,000 square feet, 100 feet of frontage. Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 4, and Lot 5 require dimensional variations for two reasons. And we reference 5.1.2.1, which is the zoning table in your zoning code with respect to frontage, area, and proximity of the hammerhead stem of each lot that has 50 feet of frontage. Lot 2 requires 160,000 square feet, because it has 50 feet of frontage. We're proposing a lot area of approximately 100,000 square feet, we're short 60,000. Lot 3, we're proposing 50 feet of frontage, has 96,000 square feet, 64,000 square feet deficient for the 160,000 square feet. Lot 5, we're proposing 124,000, we're deficient by 36,000 square feet. And Lot 6, 130,000 square feet proposed, 30,000 square feet deficient. Also, and there's a footnote to the table itself in the zoning regs with respect to the location of 50% reduced frontage lots. It basically says, you only can have two side by each, and if you have two, the next two have to be separated by two 100-foot frontage lots. Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 5, Lot 6 are only separated by one lot of 100 feet. So, again, it's a footnote to the dimensional requirements, and we're gonna be looking for that dimensional variation as well, because we submitted the plan with the lot scheme. All of this is necessary in order to give parcel A to the town of Lunenburg. We are, if this is not voted in tonight, and I, and again, that's okay, we're still going forward with the development, all right? So, we will get A and R lots out of this property, maybe not seven, maybe seven, we're not sure yet, but we are moving forward. When we had the last meeting, I did not speak, but some of the abutters spoke, and they had some concerns. And again, all valid, no question about it. They stemmed around driveway locations with respect to existing houses across the street from the development. So, I did drive it before the last meeting, I drove it again today, just to refresh my memory, and I clouded the two houses on this plan where the houses are located across the street. Let's start with number 2, Valley Road. This clouded area right here, in black, is the location of the house and driveway. This driveway will be directly opposite the driveway on Lot number 7, no question about it. Not an uncommon occurrence on any road in any community in Massachusetts. It does not pose a hazard whatsoever. But that's the only house that's opposite our frontage. The next closest house opposite our frontage is 150 Gilchrist Street. The house and driveway is located opposite the abutting property to Lot number 1, in this particular area right here. So, again, no driveways opposite our frontage for lots 2 through, I'm sorry, 1 through 6. So, that said, we're asking the ZBA to issue a dimensional variation for the lot scheme that we have, considering the fact that one of the, one of the objectives in the zoning code can be found in the purpose and authority of your zoning code itself, and I'm just gonna quote one section, there's many things in here, but one of the purposes and authorities of the zoning code is to include the conservation of natural resources and the preservation of light pollution of the environment. That's, that's a purpose, that's an objective in your zoning code, and I submit to you that this plan does exactly that. It protects the natural resource of Mulpus Brook. It adds to your 168 acres of conservation land under the jurisdiction of the local Conservation Commission. It gives to the Conservation Commission all the wetlands between the development and Mulpus Brook, something they asked for. And, equally important, it gives the trail that does exist on the property today to the town, to the residents, to the Conservation Commission, to manage. That said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, I'll open it up to the board. Dave, you still with us?
Dave, you still in?
Okay.
I'm still with you, sorry, I had you on mute, still with you.
This is my first public hearing with this type of call, and this is different.
One question, did we receive any other communication that should be read in?
We did receive something from the Board of Health. This is from Jim Griffey, I received it yesterday. He said, "Since I have not seen the plan for the subdivision A and R, my comments are generic and are listed below. One, sewage disposal works, construction permits will be required on any lot for which a building permit is sought. Two, each house will need a potable water supply. Three, lot configuration shall be designed to contain all required Board of Health regulation offset distances for fully compliant sewage disposal systems. If the area is not served by town water, the wells need to beat the board's regulations. Four, wood waste generated from the development of these lots must be handled in accordance with the Department of Environmental Protections' Wood Waste Policy and Site Assessment Regulations. Five, any retention, detention structures must be designed to minimize standing water. Six, any blasting done on-site will be done with non-perclerate-based blasting materials. And seven, the construction of the development can't create dust, odor, or noise that would create a condition of air pollution, as defined in 310 CMR 7.00." And that's signed by Jim Griffey, agent for the Board of Health.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Would you like to address that?
Absolutely, all great points, have no issues with any of them. Again, Jim Griffey's been involved in this property, he's witnessed the testing, on behalf of the town of Lunenburg and the Shobor Board of Health. We fully understand we need septic systems, wells. We performed a Title V inspection of the existing house located on Lot number 4, system failed, we designed an upgrade system, that design has been completed, don't believe it's been submitted yet to the Board of Health. With respect to Jim Griffey's comment about the A and R subdivision plan, it has not been submitted to the planning board yet, we're waiting for the, the vote tonight from the zoning Board of Appeals. If the zoning Board of Appeals does vote in favor of this dimensional variation for this lot scheme and these lots, the A and R plan is already on mylar stamped, printed, and ready to be submitted, has to be submitted to the planning board by next Monday to get on their next agenda. If the board does not vote in favor of this scheme, we have a second A and R configuration ready to go in again for the same meeting. So, that said, the A and R plan that follows this scheme has the parcel A, seven acres on it. In fact, there's a note here, the final survey, the acreage goes to the town at 7.75, it increased a little bit. So, that said, again, happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. So, can you tell me if, if we took parcel A off the table, how many A and R lots or how many, how many lots could you get by right under the current zoning law?
So, there's a couple different ways to look at it. Again, thinking along the lines that we went to town meeting and the town residents voted to do a land swap here. So, without the land swap, five. With the land swap, in a different configuration, not a big parcel going to the town, seven. We can still get seven, but a very small parcel going to the town, and the Concom doesn't get all of what they want. And the Concom has to vote on that second way, too. They haven't seen really the second way to vote on it and comment.
So, what you're saying is that really if, if parcel A is off the table as you propose it today, you still can get seven lots out of it?
As long as we do a land swap with the town as voted by town meeting, yes. Yep. This is the better way to go, only because all of this goes to the town.
And if it didn't, how much, how much would go to, how many acres would go to the town if it didn't?
Very small, very, very small. I don't have that number.
Okay.
We have to finalize the plan, I don't have it, but very, very small.
Can you tell me the percentage of wetlands that's in the back on parcel A? Like, what's out of, out of percentage of the?
None of the, none of the wetlands will go. And the walking trail won't go.
Right. So, right now, that walking trail that you have there, is that an easement or just a walking trail through the, your applicant's property?
Correct. It's a, it's a, it's a walking trail connected to the network within the lane property that the town purchased on private property. Yep.
And then, one other quick question, that, the current easement that the town has that you call Harvey Lane, where is that? And that would be incorporated, so you'd work around that if the parcel A wasn't part of the?
No, no. So, that, this parcel
Yep.
will be conveyed to Mr. Hill as part of the land swap.
Right. But what I'm saying is that if we, if, if you didn't, if we didn't give you authority to do it, that, that easement would still stay with the town where it is?
No, no. No, the town voted to do, to, to support a land swap, and we would have to deal with the selectmen in the Conservation Commission in one form or another. There's a couple different ways to do this, not our, not our preference, not the Concom's preference, but this would still go to Mr. Hill, we would still give a 15-foot easement to the town, and the walking trail and the wetlands would not be part of the parcel that gets conveyed to the town, because we would extend the area way out
Sure.
to get that for the lots. So, again, good deal for the town, good deal for Mr. Hill, working cooperatively together.
But you're, you're saying that with certainty that they could get seven A and R lots out there without parcel A?
If we do, if we do the land swap with the town, yes. Hundred percent. But, this is not going to the town in this, in this configuration. Trying to do the right thing.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may. So, you say you can extend the lots farther back, but that's wetlands, how are you gonna extend them farther back into wetlands?
Wetlands can exist on a, on a buildable lot, not a problem. Yep.
Yeah.
You just couldn't use, it would be
That's what I'm saying, you couldn't
It would be part of the lot.
Okay.
And then, it would be a nonusable part of the property.
Just to add a square footage to the lot.
Exactly, exactly. Yep. Yep.
But you mean, basically what you're asking of us tonight is to create seven nonconforming lots?
Nope, I'm not. I'm not at all, so
If you don't have the footage, then they don't conform, so I'm not, I'm confused.
So, we, there's a process that is within your zoning code to ask for a special permit, not a variance, for dimensional variations, and that's exactly what we're doing. You have the right to vote positively for a special permit for a dimensional variation varying the dimensions of the lots, frontage, area, width, et cetera. You have that right. And what I'm telling you is, we're trying to work cooperatively with the town to do a land swap. It's in both parties' interest to cooperate and take care of this. From our point of view, might not be yours, I understand everybody has a point of view, from our point of view, and the people we've dealt with within the town of Lunenburg, Adam Bernie, Matt Morrow, and the Conservation Commission, everybody is on board with this, if we can get the special permit. If we can't, we're still moving forward. So, again, we're stopping here first, doing the right thing. If we can work this out this way, the town gets this. If we can't work this out, the town doesn't get this. And again, it's just the way it is, we're trying to do the right thing.
How is a lot conforming if it doesn't meet?
It conforms to the permit you issue. You have the right to issue that permit. Dimensional variation, special permit, varying the dimensions of each lot in the zoning code, you have that right. I, I wasn't involved in the process when this was moving forward and voted in, I don't have the ins and outs on why it was voted, can't tell you. All I can tell you is, this is a permitting process within your zoning ordinance that allows this to move forward.
I mean, in my experience on the board, generally what we deal with is requests on nonconforming lots that were made before the zoning game had to place.
Sure.
I've never, in my experience here, been asked to create a lot that doesn't conform to zoning.
Well, this is, this is a first.
Right, oh, absolutely.
It's allowed, it is allowed by special permit, and it might be a first, but it's, it's a first with a worthwhile parcel to be due to the town.
So, with that leaning, that we could take a hundred-by-hundred lot in the outlying district and say, okay, you can build a house on it, because we can tell them that?
All I can tell you is, sir, that you have the right to vary the dimensions of each lot listed in the zoning code by special permit, issuing a special permit for a dimensional variation. That's all I can tell you. The, the boundaries of what you can do and can't do, that's up to the board, I have no idea. If you've talked about this in the past and what you've done with this special permit, you have the right to do it, if you want to do it.
I think we've done it in the past, but I think it, it, the special permit dimensional variation goes to existing buildings. This, there's no existing building that is going to, from my interpretation of the bylaw, it's for existing buildings that the dimensional variation that we can grant. So, you're, what you're asking us, or you're asking the board, is to grant a dimensional variation on a nonexisting building, and then make it more nonconforming to the existing bylaws. And quite honestly, I, you know, I'm struggling with the intent of the bylaw. You know, quite honestly, they have Residence A and outlying districts for certain reasons, and they have dimensional requirements required for, for both of those, those districts. Here, I think what you're trying to do, and I, I understand where you're coming from and what you're trying to do, but you're, what you're asking the board to do is to make a nonconforming lot more nonconforming.
We're not asking for, to make a nonconforming lot more nonconforming with respect to the 21 acres. We're subdividing and creating buildable lots. And again, I, my, my belief and Mr. Bernie's belief is you have the right to grant this special permit, and that's your decision.
Couple questions. I didn't quite hear all of your variations as to how the lots were lowered in square footage area.
Okay.
Could you repeat though?
Absolutely.
Again, please.
So, Lot 2, 3, 5, and 6. Lot 2, we're proposing 100,000 square feet for lot area, it's deficient by 60,000 square feet.
60,000.
Yes.
So, it normally would be
160.
160, which sum up four acres.
Correct, 160,000.
And you're asking to drop it to just over 2 acres?
Correct. Yep.
Now, it's partially because of the lack of, not 175 through the house, but the 50-foot frontage and also a diminished size as you go in by what used to be the road or Harvey Way, or whatever it is.
So, we're, we're deficient by the 60,000 square feet because we're giving the So we're, we're deficient by the 60,000 square feet because we're giving the 60,000 feet, square feet to the town, right? So we're proposing 100,000 square feet. We're deficient by 60,000 and we're giving seven acres to the town. If we utilize that seven acres and add those seven acres on to Lots 2, 3, 5, and 6, we are not going to be not in compliance with the, with the lot area.
All right. So one lot at a time, let's go through those, please, before clouding any more.
So Lot 2, to recap, Lot 2, we're proposing 100,000 square feet. We're deficient by 60,000 square feet.
Right.
Lot 3, we're proposing 96,000 square feet. We're deficient by 64,000 square feet. Lot 5, we're proposing 124,000 square feet. We're deficient by 36,000 square feet. Lot 6, we're proposing 130,000 square feet. We're deficient by 30,000 square feet.
So if I, if I could just add on to that, if my calculations are correct, my math, I think on Lot 2, you're at 63% of where you need to be at a, you know, 100 versus 160. Lot 3, you're at 60% of where you need to be under the current bylaw. Lot 5, you're at 78%. And at Lot 6, you're at 81%. So if those, those my calculations are based on each of those lots having to be 160,000 square feet.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
What about Lot 7 and 1?
Lot 7. Lot 7, Lot 7 has 100 feet of frontage. The house is being proposed in Residence A. And when that happens, Lot 7 will have a minimum lot area of 40,000 square feet, which complies with the Residence A's zoning district. Lot number 1, very same situation as Lot number 7, 100 feet of frontage. The house is being proposed in Residence A. Therefore, 40,000 square feet is the minimum lot area. This complies.
My other question was when, if you're asking to give up Harvey Way, which is 20 feet wide, for something along the Gallagher property, which is 15 feet wide, how does it affect the Gallagher property in comparison to what has been spent years and years and years of deliberation on getting this 20-foot wide access in along Harvey Way?
So we're not trading the 20-foot strip of land for the 15-foot access easement.
I understand you're not trading those properties per se.
Correct.
You must be trading some sort of easement or access or other things that people have now. How does that change to when they're doing, to a smaller access in a more private area where you have a, right now, there's no houses and you're going into an area with this private home?
So we're trading the 20-foot strip of land, about 15,000 square feet, for a seven-acre parcel, right? Town's giving us the, the 15,000 square feet, we're giving the town seven acres. And in addition to giving the town seven acres, we're also granting a 15-foot wide access strip from Valley Road all the way back to parcel A that we're gifting to the town just for foot traffic from Valley Road going back to parcel A. This will connect to the walking trail on parcel A. So it's a direct connection from Valley all the way to the walking trail along a stone wall, probably about 70% along the way. I'm not quite sure how it impacts anybody. An access easement is an access easement. It's going to be a walking trail. We don't plan to clear cut 15 feet wide. It's just a, a way to get back to the walking trail located on parcel A. Now, the Gallagher residence, I do know, is located back here, right? So if we do receive a positive vote from the ZBA and parcel A is deeded to the town of Lunenburg, this is a 60-scale plan. The nearest house from Lot number 6 is going to be over 450 feet away through the woods and probably won't be seen. So 450 overland owned by the town. That's a pretty good buffer.
But what about the access along the road or something where right now it's on the lower side where you said Harvey Way and then the other access is up there?
Yep, yep. It's just, again, we entered, we issued a warrant article to the town of Lunenburg town meeting and we asked the residents, would you be willing to give up this for this? And the answer was yes. So we then went to the next step and visited the Conservation Commission with this plan and asked them exactly, what do you want? Where do you want this line to be? And they told us where they wanted the line to be. They wanted all the wetlands, the walking trail, and the Mulpus Brook. And we also were asked for a 15-foot access easement, which we granted.
20 feet, which is reasonable for a mini road.
We don't, we don't want it to be a mini road. We don't want
15 feet is no more than a path.
Yep, that's all we want. That's all anybody wants, is a walking path going all the way back to parcel A, connecting to the existing trail already on parcel A. That's all we want. We don't want this to be a high-impact access easement. In fact, the Concom was here at the last meeting. They basically said they do not want parking on Valley Road and Gilchrist. They also said they don't want motorized vehicles going up this. There's different, and again, I don't want to get this wrong and put words in their mouth, there are different types of access that they grant. And one of them is just walking. Other types of access is motorized vehicles, and that's not what they're proposing here.
Thank you. The residents have access now, right, through the Harvey Lane?
Yes, they, oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Yep, yep.
And just I, I don't, I don't, I don't expect that you would know this, but how many people were at town meeting that voted on this particular?
I live in Westminster. I don't know. Yeah.
I'd be curious.
My apologies.
Any more questions?
I'm good.
Uh, David, do you have any questions?
I'm all set, sir. Thank you.
What did he say?
So he's all set.
Just one last question, Mr. Chairman. So really what you're saying is that lots, you're, you're looking for four lots. Lots 2, 3, 5, and 6 don't conform because they're in the outlying district.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. So just, just to kind of review, as it sits, don't land swap. I've seen in some of the papers, some say five lots buildable, some say six.
My, my belief is if we do not do the land swap and move forward, without the land swap, five. That's my belief.
That you believe five?
With the land swap, which is approved by town meeting, seven. Yep.
Okay. All right. What I will do now, you know, the questions, I will open it up to the public again tonight that anybody that would like to speak in favor, against, whatever you would like to say. Again, if you would please come forward, you'll have to put the mic back. Come forward to the mic and say what you would like to say. Well, I'm waiting. I'll make a, I'll make a comment. I understand what, what we're saying here. I understand about creating nonconforming lots from lots that aren't built on. In my mind, the only way you can do that, if it is something for the public purpose. So I think in some ways this is, in my view, appropriate where it's the swap. We've heard from, from three different boards through the town and the town vote. And again, I agree with Han says and what Paul says, this is a very unusual circumstance, a very unusual case. And if there was no, in my opinion, no public purpose to it, where they're gaining access to the land, where they're gaining conservation land, where they're protecting wetlands in a brook, that is the only reason that I would consider it. And I'm, I'm throwing that out just for a comment to the board. Again, I had asked for public comment. I didn't see, please?
Uh, my name is Kathy Moska. I live at 2 Valley Road, the one that was kind of brushed off as, oh, this is, house is down here. And that's not really quite what it is. Couple of quick comments. Early on, it's talked about the public good would not be changed by this, seven houses instead of five. We disagree, those of us who live there, adverse effect it would. One of the questions that I have, and I'm not sure if this is where to ask it, but we're going from one small house to possibly seven large houses. And Hickory Hills Lake is less than a quarter mile downhill from this. We've talked about Mulpus Brook not being affected, but I was wondering if there's some commission that is checking to see if seven large septic tanks, less than a quarter mile up the hill, is going to affect the lake, which is already, you know, Hickory Hills residents are paying for Van Wart and that type of thing. And I'm wondering if this is something else that would affect it.
Just, just to answer that, the Board of Health would indeed monitor that. They would regulate. There are regulations in place.
Okay.
Along with the Conservation Commission. So they would, there are rules and regulations. They apply to everybody. You can't just say, oh, you got a big house. They go by number of bathrooms and bedrooms.
Right. Well, this is one piece, kind of being shocked up. The seven driveways that are still there, last week when we talked to Mr. Hill, he said, oh, that's not a problem. We don't really need seven driveways. We can put it in. But I, I still, it sounds like if we're saying yes to this, that there are seven driveways, which by the way, can only exist if that little path was traded. If that little path is traded, there's not room to put physically seven driveways in there. And that path that was a throwaway comment, the path that the town can't use, that path is used. The one that's, not the one that's being traded up the side there, but the one that goes from here to here.
The one referred to as Harvey Lane?
Yeah. I live here. And because I live here, we see the people going over there all the time with walking, walking dogs, snowmobiles, the whole thing. So it bothers me when there's comments about, you know, oh, this path that the town can't use, they just kind of switched it off and it's no big deal. But it is a big deal. Seven driveways don't fit without it. So anyway, other than what I had said at the last meeting, I just kind of wanted to bring those up that maybe somebody could, you know, think about or address or figure out where to, where I should bring the concerns about the septic tanks and so forth.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Jane Gallagher, 9 Valley Road. So I guess my concern is the deficiency that exists in the lots that, you know, we're setting a precedence now for, you know, anyone to come along at any time and not quite have the frontage or the acreage that they need in order to build a house, but, you know, we'll just get it through. So I guess that, that would be a concern that I would have, that what, what makes this special? And the other concern, you know, again, is sort of, you know, why do we need two right of ways parallel to each other that go to the same place? I know, I think, I believe it was Ken Jones that said that they didn't, but it, you know, eventually they do. The path that goes from down my driveway around to the outside, the Hickory Hills land, they do meet back up to the lane property, which is exactly where this, this would go now. So, you know, that's probably my, my biggest concern.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I ask her a quick question?
Oh, of course.
So does you, so I'm looking at your property. Does your property, your driveway, would that be parallel to the new easement that they would get?
Correct.
So right now, there's no easement for you. You drive down your driveway, there's nothing, I think, assuming on your left-hand side, correct?
There's nothing on the left-hand side, no.
But there would be, under this proposed, like, plan, you'd have now a 15-foot right-of-way along your property?
Correct.
Okay.
And I, and I have a, I have a 10-foot wide one on my driveway now that's a right-of-way with the town of Lunenburg.
You do?
I do.
Okay. Is that on the plan?
Um, I don't know. I could peek and see if it shows up. No, it's not shown, but it's right along the, right inside my driveway. It goes over, uh, right up to Mulpus Brook, and then you're supposed to cross the Boyce Cap Bridge and then go out to the
So is that why you're saying that there'd be two parallel right-of-ways on your driveway or essentially near your driveway?
Right, right, yeah.
That doesn't make sense to me.
Where is your house, Jane?
My house is, uh, like, here.
So right now, there's an easement for the town people to essentially go down your driveway to access the conservation land?
The town one, correct.
And then this new one, they're saying that on the land swap, they'd swap Harvey Lane and give another, the town another easement running along the other side of your, not your property, but the, you know, the Butters property?
Right.
Okay.
So that would mean, if you say there's 10, a 10-foot easement on your property?
I think that's, I could look at my paperwork.
Then that would make this a 25-foot easement?
No, there'd be two separate easements, one on one side, one on the other, right?
No, there's no Right, well, yeah, which is kind of silly, but yes. Yeah. So mine's here on the right-hand side of it.
Yeah, they would be separated.
Yeah.
But I, I would think that most people would use the one that isn't somebody's driveway.
You would think. I mean, so the, so from your perspective, this isn't a good deal for you.
Yeah.
Because now you're getting another 10-foot, 15-foot right-of-way on the other side of your driveway, even though you don't own it, but they'd be accessing it.
Right, you know.
But right now, the only easement is up your driveway.
The only
It's on your driveway.
Yes. And people are going to walk where they want to walk. As he mentioned, there's, it's a private trail now, you know, where Ed has been. People use it all the time. There's, it's not supposed to be motorized vehicles. There are, you know, it is what it is.
Okay. Anything else to like to add? Any other questions? Well, she's here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Hello, Mr. Chairman. My name is Taki Hori. I'm at 21 Valley Road. Uh, I have a couple of questions. I know, first of all, there was a lot of talk about the discussion regarding 15-foot wide access. I noticed that in the statement, it says 20-foot.
You have to talk to us, sir.
Uh, 20-foot.
You can't speak to the applicant.
What we will do is you speak to the board and then we'll address questions.
And then he mentioned, he kept talking about 15-foot wide accessway, but in the statement, it states a 20-foot. So I just want to have clarity, is it 15 or 20 per the statement?
Okay. When, when you're done, the rest are done, I'm going to invite the applicant back up to address all these questions.
Okay. Very good. And then, again, the next question I had was, I know Jane Gallagher brought this up, but in terms of being concerned of the precedent this is setting in terms of the dimensional variation, because I foresee this as, this is something new to the town. If town accepts, then basically any other property in town could go through this and this will be the precedent for changing that dimensional variation.
Just, just so you know, just through zoning, no, this would not set a precedence.
Okay.
This does not set a precedence. Each piece of property is to be considered unique to that piece of property and it sets on its own merits. There are no precedents.
So this one, it's set a precedent?
No, no. And this one is, it's got a lot of different things, but there is no precedence.
Okay. And then I know they discussed, basically he went through Lot 2, 3, 5, and Lot 6, and basically he mentioned the deficiencies in that lot size. So basically that totals up to roughly 190,000 square feet in deficiencies in, in that lot size to make it compliant, but the builder, Mr. Hill, is only asking for 15,000 square feet. So basically, you're still going to go from four non-deficient lot sizes to four little bit less non-deficient lot sizes, because you're not going to make up that 190,000 with only 15,000 square feet, correct? That, that was my third question I had. And then I know the And then I know the last, fourth question I had was, he had mentioned about sightlines, and he had pointed to the house on Lot 6, you know, being like 450 feet away from Jane Gallagher's house. But I'm on 21 Valley Road, which is basically right across from Lot 7, across from Jane Gallagher's road, and then literally, that's only going to be like 100 feet. So it's, that 450 feet really isn't quite right. It'll be, you know, looking at this plan, you're only talking about 100 feet or less.
Okay.
Those are the questions I had.
Anything else? Any questions? Will he see it? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Dave, have any questions? Dave, do you have any questions?
No, I'm pretty clear on everything. I guess my only question is, is the 15 feet we're talking about, that there's already an egress on that, on that property on the other side? If he was not to grant those 15 feet to the town, would that lot now become a conforming lot?
We'll let them answer. Let me finish with the public, and then all of these questions could be answered. Although, you know, I will let them answer that, if you would please.
I'm going to ask you to repeat the question, if you don't mind.
Oh, he says, if you don't provide that access strip, and you just added that land to the lot, would it make the lot conforming for Lot 6?
So we're proposing to grant an access easement
Right.
to the town over Lot 7 and Lot 6. The land area contained within that easement is already added to the lot area
Oh, okay.
of Lot 6 and Lot 7. It's an easement.
Right.
And it is proposed to be 15 feet wide, because that's what we were asked to do. So could it be 20? Sure. Could it be 10? Sure. But again, in our discussions previous to this meeting, we've been asked for 15, and that's exactly what we showed on the plan. I don't know if I...
Well, what I'd like to do is let me continue with the public discussion. If there's anybody else, and then that way, I would like you to address all of their questions and concerns. I saw, well, there's one other gentleman. Right after him, you can come back.
Evagrio Mosca, 2 Valley Road, the property across the street. I share a lot of the concerns that have been spoken here. I won't repeat any of them, but I do share them. I want to address one item. We have grandchildren that are with us a lot, and they utilize the road for riding bikes, walking, and so on. It's a rather unusual road, that when you start at Northfield, it's half a mile to the base of the road, and it's sloped. And by the time cars get to our house, a quarter mile down the road, unless they're really keeping their vehicles under control, quite often, they're going 40, 50 miles an hour, sometimes faster. There are no sidewalks. My concern is where there's one house now, and there is proposed to be anywhere from five to seven large homes, I'm anticipating quite a number of vehicles that will add to the traffic that comes down the road. To me, that's a safety issue, and I'd be concerned that the kids and the adults who walk the road, walk their dogs, walk their children, kids on their bikes, and so on, that there would be an added danger by anywhere from five to 20 vehicles on the property that are not currently there.
Any question? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you'd like to speak again, you're more than welcome.
Jane Gallagher, 9 Valley Road. It was just a point that I wanted to make in regard to sort of the deficiency and the number of lots that are proposed now, that I said it before at the last meeting, that I think it's excessive. And there was something that this gentleman quoted from, I guess, our bylaws or what have you, about conserving land and property and, you know, the environment, and it would seem that, you know, seven houses is sort of directly opposed to the quote that he gave from, whether it's from conservation or it's from our bylaws, I'm not quite sure. I didn't memorize what he was saying, but it just seemed sort of opposed to what he said and what they're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none.
One more. Hi, I'm Stephen Ruggles, 48 Cliffview Terrace. My wife and I bought land 37 years ago on Cliffview Terrace, and it was a very nice neighborhood then, and it's grown quite a bit, but it's still a very nice neighborhood. When we moved in, it was dirt roads, no cable TV, no town water. Most of the lots around the lake are 100 by 150 or 100 by 75. I'm here to speak on Kevin's behalf. I will, truth be told, I am interested in having my family move to one of these lots or the house. So I do have a vested interest, but we've watched the condo development go in over the years. We've watched the, all of those folks' houses go in, and I don't think it's changed the character of the neighborhood for the worst. I think it's actually improved the neighborhood. We had a chance to go down and look at Kevin's development down behind Stone Farm Package Store, the old package store. That's a fantastically beautiful development. And when I started talking to Kevin around Memorial Day, that's the vision he has for the homes that are going to go in there. He's not, you know, he's not a fly-by-night builder in any stretch. He's going to do a great job, and he's going to add to the value of everybody in that neighborhood. The town is going to pick up almost eight acres of land for really very little. It's too bad Kevin couldn't be here, because he could speak more of as a proponent than I can, but it would seem to me, somebody said no-brainer. I don't know if it's a no-brainer, but it seems to me to make a lot of sense to swap eight acres of land for 15,000 square feet. There are going to be five houses there, one way or another, and the town can pick up seven acre, eight acres of land for 1,500 square feet. So I'm in favor of it. I think Kevin's going to do a great job. I look forward to having him as a neighbor, because my understanding is, he and his family will move to one of the lots, his business partner, Joe, will move to one of the lots, my daughter's going to be on one of the lots. So that leaves four other lots that somebody similar is going to move into those homes. So we want to be great neighbors. We want to continue to be great neighbors. I'm in favor of it. I hope you guys vote to grant him the special permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let you respeak.
I'll make this quick. I have met a lot of the people who said they were going to move in. I think he's right. They'll make great neighbors. However, this idea that we keep saying, oh, the town is going to get this many acres, and conservation can get this many, and it's a no-brainer to put in seven houses instead of five. Bribe wouldn't be the right word, but there's some kind of a, you know, who's gaining and who's losing? If you're talking about town gains five acres and nobody loses? Somebody does lose, and it's the people in that neighborhood that are going to lose if things are shifted around too much. I also am sorry that Kevin Hill is not here. I've spoken to him several times. He seems like a nice guy, and it seemed like when we were talking to him and expressing concerns about the seven driveways and everything, it seemed like there was room for some kind of compromise. But yet again, when we come tonight, it seems like they're not, and I'm not sure if this gets passed this way, does that mean this is the way it can go? That path that was switched was because without that path switch, there's not room for the seven houses. So anyway, that's what I wanted to add. It just doesn't seem right, some of this stuff is kind of thrown out there without some type of rebuttal.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? I never cut off public discussion until everybody says what they would like to. Again, I will invite you back up to address some of their questions and concerns. If he misses anything, remind me.
Again, my, I apologize if I minimized any concern of the Butters. That is not my intent. I never want to do that. So one of the questions was the deficient areas. How are we going to make up that with just getting 15,000 square feet? We're not. It's not an even trade. We're proposing to get 15,000. We're proposing to give away seven or 7.75 acres. When we come back with a different A&R plan, a different subdivision plan, we're not going to take it away from the 15,000, and we're going to take it away from Parcel A. So the town gets less land. The town won't get the wetlands, and the town won't get the walking trail if we have to go that far into Parcel A to make up the deficient lot area. With respect to the location of, I'll say both of them, because I'm not quite sure which address they were talking about. With respect to 23 Valley Road, this is a 60-scale drawing. Right now, at a very minimum, our house, proposed house, would be about 200 feet away from the nearest location on 23 Valley Road. 21 Valley Road, if I go to Lot 7, about 130, 130 feet. I'm not quite sure if anybody's here from 21 Valley Road. Okay. Okay, so that was, that's the distance that I just scaled from Lot 7. Yep.
My house is skewed, too.
Yep. I actually have an aerial photo, so I kind of looked at that before I came up. So with respect to the easement itself, the 15-foot easement highlighted in yellow on the easterly side of our property, 21 acres, I was aware that there is a town easement on your driveway. I wasn't sure where it was. I knew it did exist, and, but it was still asked for by the town, so we did willingly give that on the plan. So the yellow easement was asked for. We were willing to do it. 15 feet, again, the town asked for it. That's all I can tell you. We talked about 2 Valley Road. Again, I'm not minimizing, yep, I'm not minimizing the impact at all, but it's not uncommon for driveway, one driveway to be opposite that one driveway. So again, I don't see a health and safety impact to have a house across from another house. It happens everywhere. I really don't see a health and safety impact adding seven lots to this property on Gilchrist and Valley Road, and I base that on all the work we do at Whitman and Bingham Associates in all the communities, so.
Did you check the number of trips in that area opposed to your house?
That's relevant.
Yeah, you can't talk.
Yeah, please.
That's relevant everywhere, no matter, no matter where you are. And again, the kids' safety has always been paranoid. I was a school committee member for nine years, so I dealt with that all the time in my community, so I do have a little bit of experience with that as well. Any other questions I can answer? I mean, a lot of the questions and comments that were made kind of recapped and were stated two or three times. Those are the major ones that I knew about.
Just for clarification, just like I brought up... Just step up and say it into the mic, just so that we can have it on TV and people can...
Just for clarification, I know you keep mentioning the 15-foot accessway, but the statement says 20 feet. So basically, is it really going to be 20 feet or 15 feet?
So there's an existing 20-foot strip of land now, which is here. This is the 20-foot strip of land Harvey Lane they're talking about?
Okay.
Right here. That's going to be, if this goes through, conveyed to Mr. Hill, and we're going to convey seven acres to the town. The 15-foot access easement in yellow is being proposed for an alternative means of access to Parcel A. Yep.
It's not the state acre.
Correct. Yep, yep.
Is town water there? Is that what you're going to be using?
We propose wells.
Okay. I hadn't seen any of the layouts.
No, no. We would typically show the wells with the septic plan, and we're a little bit, we're not that far along to design the systems yet. We're waiting for this type of meeting, a decision from the ZBA, and then a decision from the planning board before we design them.
Thank you.
Yep. But we will comply with Title V, the State Environmental Code, which is the minimum design standard for septics, plus the Town of Lunenburg bylaws for septic systems. No variances will be granted or asked for.
When you were prefacing other things, you mentioned something about being able to change from having 750-foot or, say, 200, 2, 100-foot driveways and four or five 50-foot driveways to some other type of access into the properties. Is there anything else that you can present or propose?
No, no. So if, again, we're going forward tonight with the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit for dimensional variation for this layout and the deficiencies I presented. If this is granted, this is the layout we're going to go with, exactly. There's going to be small changes, an increase of land to the town, and a couple small, minimal changes to these lot areas, very small, square-feet-wise. If it's not granted, there's two ways to proceed, like I said, with the conveyance, back and forth and without. There's a five-acre A&R lot that A&R Plan will submit and get endorsed, and we'll go forward with five plans, five lots with no land to the town. If the land swap goes forward, you deny this plan, land swap goes forward, there's another scheme, an A&R lot plan with seven lots, again, not gifting this land to the town, the trail or the wetlands.
This has seven lots?
Correct.
And you're saying, you said, if this doesn't go through, we'll change from five to seven, but this is seven?
So maybe I didn't explain myself clearly, so let me start over, okay? So we have a seven-lot scheme right now before you. We're going to get the 15,000-square-foot strip of land. We're going to give seven acres plus to the town and an access easement. We're going to get seven lots. You approve it, we move forward. Everything's great. You deny it tonight, we have two options. We're moving forward. Town meeting, approve the land swap. We can still go forward with that premise. If we go forward with the premise of the land swap, I'm here telling you, we're going to get seven lots. We're going to get seven lots. We're going to get this 20-foot strip. We're still going to give them a 15-foot access easement. We're going to give them a very small portion of Parcel A, but the walking trail is not going to them in the parcel, and the wetlands are not going to the town in the parcel, because that extra land is going to be added to these lots to give them the 160,000 square feet. If we don't go forward with the land swap, for whatever reason, we're going to get five A&R lots, combination of this lot and this lot. Town keeps that, town doesn't get anything back here. So there's three ways to go forward. Tonight, you approve it, it's all set. Tonight, you deny it, there's two ways to go forward. Five A&R lots, town gets nothing. Seven A&R lots, we get this, town gets a very small parcel, not the trail, not the wetlands. Again, we're here trying to do the right thing.
I'll finish with the applicant.
Approval not required.
So it's a subdivision plan we submit to the board with frontage on a public way, existing frontage on a public way.
Anything else from the board, while he's still here?
Yeah, I, just one comment, Mr. Chairman, just some of these other boards who expressed, you know, their willingness to do this. some of these other boards who expressed, you know, their willingness to do this, don't deal with land issues like we do. Conservation doesn't, so they would have no experience in a matter like this. The planning board writes the regulations that we follow. But, you know, I'm just saying that this is what we do, that's what they do, and, yeah, they could give us their two cents, but they're not used to doing this type of stuff. I just wanted to say that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Any comments?
David?
Still with us, Dave?
I'm with you guys, sorry.
All right. No problem. Just checking on you, Ken.
Okay, if there are no more of the comments, if--
Are we doing, are we doing now, public comments closing now, it's just board discussion?
Public comment is closed. We're now doing, back to the board.
So, here's my comments, Mr. Chairman. I think if there was no land swap on the table, this is a variance that they're coming for us, and I have a problem with the fact that, you know, they're asking for four reduced lot sizes, and I think it goes against the intent of the bylaw personally. So, that's, those are my comments. You know, they can work with the town and figure out how they want to do it, but either way you look at it, they're going to get five A&R lots out of it.
Five, possibly seven.
Possibly seven.
Okay.
Yeah, I pretty much concurrence with Hans that, you know, when we give dimensional variations, it's for a lot that was already not conforming, someone wants to put a deck on, it's got to be too close to the side yard, that's the type of dimension, in my experience on this board, that we've granted in the past, Mr. Chairman.
And I would add to that.
There's a--
I would add to that, if you look at 83214, which talks about the special permit for dimensional variation, it says, "Dimensional requirements may be exceeded by special permit so as to conform to the average height, setbacks, or other relevant dimensions of existing principal buildings, fronting on the same street or within 500 feet of the premises." So, you know, I also think that the only special permit dimensional variation would be lot number four, where the existing house is sitting.
Okay. Again, I will go back to, and I'm just going to agree with just saying, this is a very unusual case in what's going on here with a land swap. I again feel that the only way we could consider this is if it is for the public good. And in a sense, I kind of feel that maybe in this particular case, we could lean that way, but again, you know, it's up to you guys to decide whether you feel that it goes against the intent or not.
Well, I'd be curious to find out whether the applicant, what the applicant does and how he uses that premise when, you know, if it gets denied and they want seven lots, you know, how are they going to proceed with that, that premise?
Well, I think, I think he explained that by, I think he explained that by just going farther back, taking the land, and it becomes built--
Sure. And that's their right.
It is their right, correct.
Could you call out where it here, it says that we can do things for the public good?
Well, under, if you went to, and this one is an occupied lot, but under 5161, it clearly states you can't do any reduce and changes. This is talking about an occupied, but then it ends with, "This prohibition shall not apply, however, when a portion of a lot is taken or conveyed for a public purpose." So, it does kind of give an intent, even though it doesn't particularly apply to this particular case, it gives some indication of where they go. Okay, so with that, I will ask for a motion, if everybody is done. Oh, and we also need a roll call vote, because of David.
David, okay.
So with that, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we deny the applicant based on, it nullifies against the intent of the bylaw.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We will take a vote. David, did you hear the motion?
I'm here, guys.
Did you hear the motion, David?
I'm sorry?
Did you hear the motion? There was a motion to disapprove.
Yeah, I heard the motion, yes.
And how are you voting?
I would vote against that, I would vote against that motion.
Okay.
I would vote to approve, based on the benefits to the town that this provides.
Okay. Thank you. Jim?
I vote to disapprove of the motion. I vote to approve of the motion as stated.
Hans?
Approve the motion to deny.
Okay. And I would not approve the motion to deny, I would go with a new approval. So, the vote is three in favor, two against, and you need a supermajority, which means that it is denied.
One more, Jim.
Yes?
So the motion was to deny the plan.
The motion was to deny the plan.
So the plan is not denied.
The plan is denied. He made a motion to deny the plan. Am I correct, Hans?
That's correct.
And three--
The motion was to deny.
Correct.
Paul--
Is in favor of the--
And Hans--
Of the motion is right.
Were in favor of the denial.
And three were against?
Three were correct, but you need a supermajority, which means you need four.
Out of five.
Four to--
Okay, so again, I'm still confused, and I apologize for that confusion. So, there was a--
In other words, the vote is three in favor, two ag-- three--
No, two in favor of the motion.
Yes.
The motion was to disprove the application. Three were against disproving the application.
Correct. So the motion--
You said it backwards.
Yeah.
You said it backwards, Paul.
Oh.
He voted to deny the motion.
Right.
You agreed.
Right, I voted--
He agreed, so that's three no's and two yeses.
Yes. I, again, let me say it in my terms, so I fully understand it.
Okay.
So the motion was to deny the plan.
Correct.
Correct.
Two members of the zoning board of appeals voted to deny the plan.
Two members.
Correct.
Hans and Paul.
Three members voted not to deny the plan.
Correct.
Correct.
However--
No, two members-- No, no.
No. David, James, and myself.
Therefore, the motion did not carry. So the plan is not denied.
No, the motion did carry, because the motion wasn't denied. We can reverse it, and we can make a motion to approve.
Well, the motion to deny the plan did not carry. Am I correct, the--
The motion to deny the plan did carry.
It happened under one and six in the other. I can reverse it if you would like to make, if it would make you feel better.
We could have had a motion to approve, you would have had three votes to approve, two votes against approving, you needed four out of five.
You need four out of five.
You need one of those two votes--
So if you would like, I will make a motion.
Please, please do.
I will make a motion to approve the plan as presented.
Second that motion.
Okay. Those in favor. David?
I'm in favor.
I am in favor. James?
No.
No.
No. It is denied.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Good night.
And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Still move. Second.
Paul, Dave, stay on for a minute.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to also bring up that we would like to submit tomorrow the names. We would like to submit you for a full seat to a regular member on the zoning board, and we have another gentleman that filled out an application that we talked to--